This conference will now be recorded.
We got another minute.
Yep. It's recording, so everybody's aware. Bob, your packet's running the desk.
Yes, I've got it right in front of me. Thank you. Thank you, Dorothea.
No problem.
Yep.
Looks like we're just waiting on Renee.
Yep. It's just turned six o'clock.
Yep.
Let's give Renee another minute.
Hello, Dan.
Hey, guys. Hot weather out there, my word.
Ninety-three.
Yeah. I like running in the heat, get a good sweat. Can't go very far, but you get a good sweat.
Just a reminder, we have to say we're doing the meeting this way because of the pandemic.
Yes. Okay, let's, let's start and we'll just let, oh, Renee's here. Renee's here. Hi, Renee. I was just gonna start without you, but you're here. All right, I'll make a motion to call the meeting to order. Would someone like to second that motion?
Trustee Lamphier, second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha. Frank, you're muted.
Muted, Frank.
There you go.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the first item, Jeff isn't on yet, so we're gonna start with the Treasurers' report.
Correct. Mary sent out the report earlier today, and she sent it out on Friday, but details were included today. In your initial, you see that there was an outstanding bill for the eighty-two fifty for Osborne Reed. She's asking that that invoice be approved as well, along with the others.
Yeah, so I sent that around to you guys. It's just one charge. My only question on it is, why did that come on a separate bill? Why wouldn't that just come on a normal monthly bill? It was one charge for twenty percent of an hour, so twelve minutes?
It's a different attorney than Jeff. He's billed differently.
Ah, okay.
And I have
That along, and I've reviewed it. It's one charge for twenty minutes. I've reviewed it and feel it's fine for us to, for you guys to review and vote on.
Okay, great.
Yes. Dorothea, is, is Mary looking for an approval to, for the Hodgson-Russ bills and the Zoglin bills? Or she just sent those along for our information?
She sent them along. She's looking, actually, she expressed to me she really needs these cleared out. She would have liked to have seen them in this bill pay because we're hitting the end of the year. But we'll carry one more bill pay into the next, and she'd really like to clear out all that she can clear out at that time. So as soon as we can get those bills approved, that would be fabulous.
Okay, so guys, here's, here's the status. I was gonna give status on this later, but we might as well do it now. There are a handful of bills. So there's the one bill that I sent to you guys, which I think we can approve. It's eighty-some odd dollars. There's one bill for Zoglin, which has gone to Susan for her approval. And there's one bill for the HPB, which has gone to Bill McBride for his approval. Usually, they, they, they've been better about turning them around quickly. I don't see any reason why we won't be able to approve those at the next meeting. They look pretty straightforward to me. The Hodgson-Russ ones are taking me some time to get through. It's a year's worth of bills. There are thirteen of them. So it's my intent to get through them. I was hoping to be done today and ready to pass it on to you, but I need a little more time. So I'll make it as a target for our next meeting. This, this is one of the downsides of holding bills for a year. But there are thirteen of them dating back to April of 2019.
Trustee Galusha, the, the Hodgson-Russ situation is that we do not have a current agreement with them. And in one of their bills, the hourly rate changes for both Chuck Malcolm and Dan Spitzer from, from, I think, two ninety-five to three fifty an hour. So before we can approve those bills, we should have a new agreement from them signed.
Okay, traditionally, who gets, thank you, Frank, who gets that agreement?
Well, Bob, isn't that something that you've been working on with them?
Yeah, in fact, I talked to them earlier today to remind them that we need an agreement from them by the end of this week.
Okay.
And I did receive a text back from Dan saying they will provide something, and it'll be circulated to everyone. We, we may have to have a special meeting to approve that because we don't have a draft tonight. And we probably should go ahead and try to maybe on Friday, I'm guessing. If we could get a quorum of the board, just so we can get that agreement approved, because it needs to be done by the end of our fiscal year. Dorothea, do you want to add anything to that?
No, Mary just expressed that. Make sure that this is a long-term debt on the agreement. We don't want to carry it as outstanding on the bill pay. So if we can get it done Friday, would be essential.
Well, we need the agreement for the long-term debt. And then we also need a current agreement citing their new hourly rates in that.
So we need Could we set a meeting, though, for Friday, and this way we can hopefully tie this all up in a pretty bow and not have to try to rush to get this done? Because I have posting concerns.
Rush to get all of what done? The bills all approved, or the agreement all approved?
The agreement approved.
The agreements, plural.
Yes. If we can get the agreements done, we can handle the dollars afterwards. But if we get an agreement that the current outstanding debt will be a long-term with them, that would be, I think, a good thing.
Um, can we do it in the afternoon, or what time would people prefer?
Doesn't matter, whatever works for everyone.
Dan, what constraints do you have? Does Friday work for you, or what time would be best for you?
I'm pretty good in the afternoon. After about two, I'm pretty good. I'm also good, I'm also good first thing in the morning.
I have morning meetings, so I can't do it in the morning.
How about three P.M.?
Three P.M. would be fine with me.
I can do three.
That's okay with me.
Okay. All right, I will post that tonight.
Okay, assuming that we get a agreement that, because I want to read it before the meeting, when, and really know what its differences are from the last agreement. Besides, besides an hourly rate change. So when do we think we can get that?
When I called Dan Spitzer, he was on another, another call. He couldn't talk. He texted me back and said, I'll have something to him. I'll probably talk to him at some point tomorrow.
And you have the old one, right, Dorothea? So
Yeah.
You can use that, Dan, for, for comparison.
Can you circulate that, please, Dorothea?
Yes, I will send that out tomorrow morning.
Anything else from the Treasurers' report, besides bill pay?
Nope, that'll be it. I just need the approval on the bill pay.
I've reviewed the vouchers. Would someone like to make a motion to pay the bills?
You gonna refer to those vouchers?
I'll make the motion. Would someone second it?
I'll second it. Frank Galusha.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Trustee Keating.
Trustee Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item we have is a continuation of the public hearing to amend the special permit, special use permit for the Pittsburgh Pub. Jeff's recommendation on this one was that we, we tabled it the last time. We haven't had any feedback from the owners of the pub. Probably at this time, any event like this is going to be either phase three or phase, maybe even phase four. Jeff's advice, because so much time has elapsed since the initial application, that we just let this one elapse. And if they, if they want to apply for it, they, they need to file a new application.
Trustee Galusha, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. So I don't know if it requires any action. I guess that's a Jeff Turner question.
My understanding, it require you to close the public hearing and then just to, I don't know if you want to deny the application or just can't
I don't think we have to take any action on it. And if we do, Jeff can tell us that when he gets here later on. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Galusha.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item we have is a non-municipal use permit for the two thousand twenty season of the sand patch. I talked to Bruce, Bruce Van Heist today. They believe they will be able to run the sand patch in phase three. They're planning when they, they, there are national boating guidelines for social distancing, so they do have a plan. Their boat will be about at half capacity. They're planning to start the season with charters of families or small groups, just to sort of work things out before they have, you know, groups that might be mixed of different groups of people. I also, so Renee, I asked him about the, his opinion about the one-way on Shane Place. He had no problem with it.
All right, thanks. We'll get to that one later.
Yeah, but I'm just, just telling you now. So I would make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty non-municipal use permit for the operation of the sand patch at the Village Wharf on the north side of the canal.
I'll second that, Trustee Keating.
Trustee Lamphier, but a question?
Yes.
Did we, do we need a forty-five day waiver, or is it filed without, outside of that forty-five day?
Um, it might be safer to put the forty-five days, since you don't know when the operation can happen.
Yeah. I'll amend my motion to incorporate the forty-five, a waiver of the forty-five day notice requirement. Okay, roll call vote.
I have a question, Bob. Question.
Yeah.
There was a problem they had with, with renting the site. Did they resolve that problem?
I wouldn't say it's resolved, but what I would say is that Steve and I looked at the tax map, and it appears that very little of the pavilion is actually on the Collins family property. And, you know, if they moved it a few inches, probably nothing would be on the Collins property. Bruce Van Heist said the Collins have not followed up on anything, and I suspect they're more concerned about the health of their tenants than, you know, getting six hundred dollars a month in rent for that little sliver of the sand patch ticket booth.
We might check. I believe the captain was gonna try to chime in tonight. She might be here. We have some callers, and I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
Is there a representative for
The sand patch?
If you're here, you just need to unmute yourself. Okay.
Okay.
So roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha. Frank, you're muted.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I have two quick things before we get on to the next thing. I'm sorry to jump in.
Actually, that's, that's okay, Dan, because Justin Galistro was gonna tune in at six-thirty to be part of the lock thirty-two, so go ahead.
Great. So one of them is, Dorothy, you mentioned at the beginning of this that you needed Bob to say something about why we're doing this online as a response to the governors. Do we still need to do that?
We should still make that statement.
And then the second thing is, I did just get approval from Bill Smith on one of the bills. If you guys want to come back to that and approve that one, too.
Bill McBride.
Bill McBride, not Bill Smith. All right. So many bills.
Do you, do you have the statement? Dorothea, going back to Dan's point about the statement, do you have that in front of you where we can just quote it and put it in the minutes?
Um, the statement is basically, this meeting is being held video conference due to the coronavirus pandemic and the exemption given to the open meetings law.
Thank you.
Which invoices are you looking for approval on, Dan?
Okay, so it is
Jeff Turner.
Yeah, it's, it's O R B four nine six six.
Yep.
It's the one that Bill just approved, and the amount is this invoice is two-two-two-seven-fifty. So you guys, you guys all have this in your email.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to the Osborne Reed bill for the HPB that Dan has just approved, or reviewed.
Reviewed, thank you. I'll second that motion. Keating.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier.
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Motion passes.
Great. Okay, let's jump ahead because Jeff is, still isn't here, and I know Justin would also like to be part of those two agenda items. Let's go to number five for the always stops proposed in the active transportation plan at the
Bob, you need to face the camera.
Oh, sorry. Freeway stops proposed at the intersection of the Sutherland High School driveway and the intersection of Maple Street and South Street on the east side of the village.
Mayor, this is Trustee Galusha. I want you to know that I asked our, our DPW superintendent, Zach Blyer, to be a part of this meeting tonight because he has some time to make on both, both of those issues as, as well as the Shane Place issue. Zach will be a, a part of our meeting.
Hey, guys, I just muted everybody because we're getting a lot of feedback, so one by one, you can unmute yourselves.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay. Did everybody hear what I said?
Yes, we heard that Zach is here as part of the discussions because he needs to be for the implementation and discussion if we were to put in the always stops. And also, if, whatever we do at Shane Place, whatever we experiment with down there.
Yes.
Yes. So I put the always stops on the agenda because I didn't want to drop this conversation that got some momentum back in the winter. And when we got the traffic, the area-wide traffic study from SRF, we looked at those two, or two, two of those locations were included as part of that. And the always stop at Sutherland, in front of the entrance of the school, has, was, was recommended on page nine of that traffic study as a, as one of the solutions, and because it is a very low-cost solution, that is one that we could implement while, while school is not in session. And so we're, we're bringing it up now. And it was also approved by the emergency responders. They, they don't have any issues with that particular, with either of those locations that I put on here. So I wanted to bring up the conversation again and, and start the discussion. And then on South, we've talked about that one before, given that the Maple, this was one of the things that the Maple Street neighbors asked for. And typically, you don't use stop signs as a traffic calming measure. However, given everything else that's not available to us right now to do on South and Maple, such as parking, alternate side parking, extending the curb bump outs, speed humps. And I know that whenever we have the speed cushions put in on South, whenever that will occur, that will help. But that's a, a little ways out. So one of the most immediate and inexpensive measures to help with that corridor is the always stop at Maple and South. So did I capture everything?
The only thing I would add, Renee, is although you're not supposed to use stop signs as a speed control device, it is appropriate, according to David Cruz, to improve the safety at intersections. For example, one of the problems at Sutherland Street is because there's a lot of younger drivers, obviously, that come out of there, and it's a fairly high-volume driveway when school is in session, that people fly out of that driveway. I've seen many cars not stop, and there's limited visibility because often during the school day, there's cars parked along the west side of the street. So this, this would greatly improve the safety at that intersection. There's a lot more turning movements, obviously, there than there is at the Lincoln-Sutherland dish, intersection because of the high volume that goes in and out of the school parking lot.
Right, and they already sort of, oh, go ahead.
The same thing could be said for the Maple-South Street intersection. The problem is people are not slowing down to take the turn. It, it, by making them come to a complete stop, the driver is forced to be aware if there are pedestrians that want to cross the street. And it makes the, the intersection safer for both drivers and, and for pedestrians.
So I, I, I agree with Renee. I think we should move ahead.
The, the one at Sutherland, actually, just to, to clarify a little bit, is not a traffic calming. It is, it was warranted by their study, given the amount of traffic that comes in and out of there when school is in session. And so that was warranted there, and everyone is already, sort of, some of the people already sort of do an informal three-way stop there, but yet others don't, and it gets confusing. And I think, Bob, you've already talked to the either, did you talk to the principal or the superintendent? I can't remember.
I talked to Mike Piero, the superintendent of the schools. If we have a schedule and we actually approve doing this, I would, as a courtesy, remind him of this with a date when the signs are gonna be in place. I'm assuming, Zach, that we would also get those new signs that sort of highlight in a visible fashion that there is a different traffic pattern.
Uh, yeah, we could do that. My only concern with the stop sign on South Street is, in the southbound direction, the stop sign that would be placed before Maple would be going on a very narrow section of sidewalk. And there isn't much room between the curb and the sidewalk to put a stop sign up. So if we were to put a twenty-four by twenty-four stop sign up there, it's gonna be overhanging both the road and the sidewalk. So it could be a headbanger or a mirror smasher of cars.
Why don't we take a look? Is it because the sidewalk on South Street is adjacent to the curb? Is that the problem?
Yes. Yeah, and it's a narrow sidewalk to begin with. There is a little bit of, of a lawn in between the curb and the sidewalk, but it's about eight inches. It's not much.
But what, how do we handle the stop signs on Wood Street? Because there, the, the sidewalk is also adjacent to the curb.
Well, again, I mean, kind of hoping that no one runs into it. I'm just pointing out the problem.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. So we should get out there. I don't think those conditions exist at, at Sutherland. That one's plenty, got plenty of room. So, okay, that's a good, that's a good point. I
No, but where are the signs located on Wood Street? Are they, are they are they in a place where they don't obstruct the sidewalk or visibility?
Yeah, Wood Street's pretty clear. I think you can dodge them pretty well. We get around them with our machines fine enough. That section there, it is pretty tight weaving through the utility poles, and there's a stone wall lining the other side of the sidewalk. So there, there isn't really a whole lot of room to, to move around. It's kind of the problem. So if you get kids on bikes that are standing up, I mean, it could pose a problem with banging their head on it. Or a car that's rubbing the shoulder or the curb. If it's tall enough, it could, like a truck, it could hit it.
Okay, that is not something that was laid out in the traffic study. So we, it sounds like we're not quite there yet to
It seems like we need a site visit.
Yeah.
Zach, you and I should just go down there and see, see what, you know, walk it, and then see where the sign could be put, where it can be seen, and where it's not causing a safety problem.
Yeah, I'll put, I'll mark together, mark up a sign together so we can go in there and do that.
Great, great, thank you.
Yep.
So are there any issues with the, the one at Sutherland, Zach, that you see?
Visibility mostly, just because it's gonna be on the far side of the road if you're heading south. And most of the traffic does end up kind of towards the center there because of the parking stalls that'll land up on the curb. So is, I think with a wide enough white line in the middle of the road, or going out to the middle of the road, should be all right. I think it's just gonna be some time for people to get used to it. Because it's not in your face to be able to see it.
Okay, okay. All right. That's all I have.
The other thing, we should look at the sight lines, Zach, to make sure that the parked cars don't obstruct the stop sign and that you can see it when you're proceeding south.
Yeah.
So we need to be pretty far back from the driveway now, but we, we, again, we should look at the sight lines.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dan, you, you have
Sorry, guys, I thought you were done. So we need to go to public hearing on this if, if we're hearing on this if, if we're to pass it, right? Do we want to get that scheduled? And obviously it's pending a site visit.
Actually, you can't, actually, you can't set that public hearing till you have the local law. It has to age in front of you. So maybe direction should be given to Jeff to prepare the local law for those sites.
And he just tuned in. So can you hear us, Jeff? You're muted.
He needs to turn his microphone on.
He's, Jeff, you're muted.
I can hear you.
Good. So can you write a local law to authorize the two stop signs, the three-way stop at Sutherland and the high school and Maple Street and South Street?
I can.
Then I can put it on our next agenda for the board to set up.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Uh, let's go back to block 32 now that Jeff is here. Jeff, do you want to give a little background on your investigation in the code and how you came to the conclusions that you did for the, what you're recommending?
Well, I'm, I'm not really recommending anything. I'm just laying out.
I didn't mean it that way. I mean.
So, so Steve and I talked about this, then I thought about it a little more over the weekend. And then I thought about it a little more today. Right now, as we have it, the tavern overlay district and somewhere short of this parking lot. And to do a special permit for outside assembly area for the tavern would not work. It's not a permitted use. So if you flip that on its head, then since it's not a permitted use, it would be something that's subject to or could be subject to an application for a temporary zoning permit. So that sort of puts this outside of the control of the board of trustees and puts it in the hands of the ZBA. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing. It's a thing.
Jeff, wouldn't this be analogous to the permit that's issued for the beer tent that annually at the paddle and pour is placed in the Victor Furniture Parking Lot?
It would be. And I don't, I cannot remember how we permitted that.
I think it was included as part of the town's non-municipal use permit, but it really is different because it's a private, for-profit vendor.
Yes.
That's, that's locating a, a use that isn't, isn't allowed in the underlying zoning, but is allowed by temporary use for an event. And so isn't this very similar?
It is similar, but I would not use the words, it is allowed. It's allowable. If, if, if the conditions in, in the temporary zoning permit statute are met with the findings from the ZBA, then yes. You know, I caution you that, that if you go down this road, and I'm not really sure, I shouldn't use the word caution. I point out to you that if you go down this road, this is something that could happen annually unless one of the findings of the ZBA was that we're in this recovery period with social distancing.
Trustee Lanfier? I got frozen if anybody can.
We can still see you, Lily.
I'm sorry?
I said, we can still see you. You're not frozen.
Okay, but I'd like to be recognized. You guys are frozen to me, I think.
Okay, go ahead, Lily.
Thank you.
We can hear you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, one of the questions that I had, and I think it was something that you might have mentioned, is that the possibility existed for the owner of the property, whoever's representing the Collins family, to apply for a special use permit for the use of that parking lot as a temporary outside assembly area that would be able to be utilized by all of the tenants of Shane Place. And I'm wondering about that as a viable option rather than create a temporary use permit. So this would, this would benefit all of the restaurants in the area and not just one, one specific.
That is Casey's proposal, isn't it?
Well, it was generally Bob, but he was making the application. And, and I think the distinction is that the Collins family, as the owners of the property, would be making the application in representing all of the tenants so that they would all be able to use that area for overflow or whatever way you want to call that. They will all be in the same situation.
The problem is.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. The problem I see with that is, is the one, really the one tenant who could not use it. Would be, would be the tenant that proposed it.
No, why wouldn't they be able to use it if the rest of them were able to use it?
Because that would be an outside assembly for a tavern, and it's not permitted in that part of the zone or that part of the district. Restaurants, all restaurants are permitted throughout the district. But a tavern is not permitted in that zone. And if you look at the definition of outside assembly, you will see that it's tied to the adjacent use.
I see.
So the adjacent use being a tavern, you've extended the tavern into where it can't be. So that's why I suggested the temporary use permit.
I see. Okay. Because there is an adjacent use also that is a restaurant.
Right. And that would be, and that would be fine. And it would be an enforcement nightmare. If you want that way to say that, that, that the block 32 couldn't use it because they're a tavern would be an enforcement nightmare.
I see. Okay. I understand.
My judgment. Now, Steve may disagree and he's got his hand up.
You go ahead. You have the floor.
Well, I did, I did think this has to be, it has to be a too, a too fasted approach. I, I did ask the Collinses to apply for an assembly, a special permit from the board of trustees for an assembly area because that is their property. They're the only ones who technically can apply for a assembly permit in that area as they own it. Block 32 could not apply for assembly for that outside area. Now whether or how to permit the lock 32 to utilize it is a different story. I still, I mean, I still thought they would be valid to amend their special permit, but it becomes the issue of pre-existing non-conforming in the code. And that once you touch something pre-existing non-conforming, it creates a problem in the code. So if it was workable and, and you had to do it both ways, the Collinses apply, have applied for a outdoor assembly special permit from the board of trustees, which is legal in the MU EC district, then possibly if, if that makes Jeff comfortable, then it would have to go to the zoning board for a temporary zoning permit to allow them to use it based on whatever the state liquor authority restrictions are for that use.
So, I mean, people rent places all the time. I mean, I, I don't think lock 32 owns their building, but they're operating with a permit because they rent it. If they entered into some kind of, and I assume they would, leasehold arrangement with a Collins family, and they wanted to take, undertake the whole enchilada, if you will, to, to rent and, and run this as a, and I don't know how they do that with the liquor authority, frankly. But if they wanted to run this as an open eating area and they controlled it, then you could, you could just do a temporary use permit. Because I think if you do a special permit from the trustees, you're also going to have to do minor site plan approval because you're losing three parking spaces. But I think the zoning board of appeals would have the jurisdiction in their temporary use permit process to do all of that in one fell swoop.
Trustee Lanfier? Also, I wanted to clarify, and when we were talking about this as far as when the area, from what I could see on the drawing that was submitted in the proposal, there was a portion of it which was a publicly held property. And so I would suggest that line be moved back. So what we're talking about is only property that is owned by the Collins family and not include publicly owned lands because that, oh, it becomes an entirely more complex situation when we're trying to deal with, with publicly owned land. So that perhaps maybe all of the parking spaces would disappear and that the whole parking lot then would become the assembly area. This is just a, you know, my observation from what I could see on the drawing that was presented, that, that would, that would simplify things, I think.
So, so this is Casey. When, when we did get this drawing done, we did go on a, a recent survey that our landlord had provided us. It was somewhat of a surprise to us when I spoke with Bob and he said that the line was on public property. So if, if it is indeed, I, I think it's probably relatively close. Our goal was to remain on private property. So I am happy to work with, with Steve and anyone else to, to get the line drawn appropriately. That was based on a survey map provided by the Collins family. That was where we thought our, you know, inside of our line was. But we're happy to revisit that.
I have a trustee Stetzer question. Lily just brought up maybe making the space a little bigger and taking away some spots. I know that you were trying to make to kind of get the best of both worlds and you only lost three spots. Do you share that parking with anybody else? Or would there be a downside of making it bigger like Lily suggested?
Yeah, well, part, as everybody knows here, and we've been in front of this board before and had struggles with parking. Parking is always an issue. So we do, that lot is shared amongst all of the Collins property. So, so with Aladdin's, with the Coal Tower, with the whole, the strip of building with True Salon and Simply Crepes as well. So when we, we approached all the business owners and our landlord, we did talk about trying to conserve as many spots as possible and, and hoping to have the best of both worlds. And we saw 2150 in square feet and only losing three spots is a, a big win that everybody could get behind. And, and that's, that's definitely what we experienced when we presented it to everybody.
Um, one concern I had, Casey, is that currently many people that go to Aladdin's, assuming that Aladdin's will open up at some point, use the crosswalk and then they, they walk west over to the entrance to Aladdin's. They would be walking behind the backs of cars out in the roadway, which is a little bit of a hazard. The other thing, and I think Steve may have mentioned this to you, is currently many people use that crosswalk to walk through the walkway to get to the pavilion area where the docks are and everything. And, and I think leaving access through there makes sense. Otherwise, people that cross the crosswalk, you know, they can only go west. And it, 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 it sort of hampers access to the canal itself from, from the parking as well as to Aladdin's.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna, we're gonna need an access, oh, I'm sorry, Renee. We're gonna need an access point anyways. Because we're, again, it's a community center and a community patio. So we plan on doing that anyway. So that's as easy as just making that, that gate on that same path and coming out the other side. I don't think that'll be an issue.
On the positive side here, I think this is a creative way to open up and provide a reasonable level of safety. So I just, we're looking, we're talking, focusing on the details, but I think the general concept, obviously, communities around the country are doing similar things. And, you know, we're glad you're doing this because it's, it's a way that people can enjoy beer from block 32 micro brewery.
Yeah. And, and like I think Lily brought up, our neighbors as well. And that, that was very much, I mean, I didn't, I know I gave you guys a proposal, but I didn't really get to talk to it. But this is absolutely, we understand that, that other businesses doing well around us in, in turn makes us do really well. And we also have developed a lot of relationships with the other owners. So this is, is very much to, to help us, but it's also to help our neighbors and help a, a part of the, the village that we, that we love. And I think it's a, a pretty dangerous time for all small businesses. And, and to tell you the truth, even opening back up and we'd, we'd be considered phase three, it's not a guarantee that we can even do that in our, our current building. And I, I know that I've spoken with other restaurants that have the same level of concern that a 25% capacity that's potentially being proposed may not be worth the additional staffing and expenses for PPE and, and so on and so forth. And, and just in general, putting your, your employees at, at risk and your patrons at risk. So it's definitely, it's a, I think it'd be really good for the community. And I think it's a really safe way for a lot of people to ease back into this. And, and I, I personally have no idea how long this is going to last. Even if we open back up by fall and everything's great, there's still going to be a lot of hesitation with people coming into an indoor building. And to tell you the truth, most of the Collins property restaurants are that. Aladdin's has a little bit and Coal Tower has a little bit, but the majority of their customers are sitting inside. And it's, uh, yeah, it's going to take some creative thinking. So I appreciate you guys reviewing it.
Uh, Steve?
Um, no matter what, Jeff, any of these proposals require public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if the parking lot and block 32 were in the tavern overlay district, would that allow it all to be done in one other place?
It would, but that, my thought would be that you get that one other place with the temporary use permit. I don't think, I think if you do a temporary, well, can I, Casey, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure, go ahead.
How, if we gave you control of that whole space, I mean, let you do this, how do you imagine people from other businesses utilizing it? And.
Yeah, so.
Doing it with the blessing of the liquor authority?
Yeah. So the liquor authority would just, it, it would essentially be operating the same way that we're operating now. So right now, we're licensed inside and we have local restaurants that deliver into us. So it would be the same idea about bringing it outside. The only concern the liquor authority has is that you're in good standing, which we are, and the, the proposed outdoor space, you have an agreement with your landlord, which we would have, and then that it's, it's roped off or confined in some way. So really, our idea is if, if we have it set up as a patio, all the local restaurants would be able to have their servers serve customers and patrons out on that patio as would we. We would have to license it from an alcohol, alcohol standpoint, but, but food is, is fair game in a, a public space like that outdoors.
So they're going to let servers go through the barrier to serve?
With, with food, yes. That's, that's currently allowed. It's how we, we operate today.
They come into your establishment, don't they?
They, they do. Yeah. So a, a Coal Tower waiter or waitress will, will walk in the door with, I take out food. And then hand it to a customer.
I'm sorry, Casey. Are they gonna, are, do you envision them coming through your building to get there or just coming outside to get there?
Yeah, just coming outside to get there was, was my thought. Now, you, you can't get too many answers from the liquor authority before you have approval from the, the local jurisdiction. But like Bob said, my idea was to have an entry point outside as well, obviously, so that customers don't have to walk through our building to order food from, from Aladdin's. And, and we've got another business in Perrington that operates in a very similar way with outdoor space. And it's not a concern with the liquor authority at all.
So that the liquor authority will let you have some kind of gate there?
Yeah. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a gate from the liquor authority standpoint. And I can work with Steve as, as far as what he would like. It just needs the, it just needs to be confined. And then your, your entrance and exit just needs to be clearly marked. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a closable gate.
Lily, hold on, just one word.
Okay.
My questions were not, I just wanted to make sure we weren't giving you something that then would not be workable for you with a liquor authority.
Yeah, and I'm confident. Yeah, we've got an attorney that works hand in hand with the liquor authority and, and we've spoken with her and she doesn't see any issue with it at all.
Okay. Trustee Lanfier, to be, to be clear, we're still talking about social distancing. So when patio is set up, my assumption is that the, it is set up with tables and chairs that are socially distanced. It's not people standing in the patio area, for instance, with a, you know, with their beverage in hand.
Yeah, that's our, yep, that's our whole goal. Yep. We're, we're hoping to be able to give people an ability to socially distance outside.
Yeah.
Yes. And we're, we're going to have to have staff to, to police that as best we can. And, and that's, that's a, an issue for us inside as well. That, that's what we're working on staff. We talked about in the PowerPoint, if you read it, a lot about training employees. And that's going to be a really big hurdle for us to stay on top of that and try to lay it out as best we can so that people abide by that.
I have a question, Casey. So assuming that. Uh I have a question, Ca- Casey, so um assuming that uh phase three uh lasts, I don't, well, we don't know how long it will last. Um how, after this is no longer needed, hopefully, uh when there's a vaccine, I guess, uh then there would be a a, the the lot would be restriped the way it is now and the the lost parking spaces would be recovered.
Yeah, this is very much a temporary uh a mark on our part. Now, the the question is when that day comes. And like I said, it would probably be an ongoing conversation I would, Seth and I would have with with you guys. Just to say, hey, even if we're a hundred percent, the restaurants all met and we're still really down in numbers because people still aren't confident in in coming back. And you're seeing that across the country right now is a lot of restaurants and and bars open. People still aren't coming because they're not necessarily comfortable. So I think that would have to be a conversation we would have. But this is meant to be a temporary solution to get us through this tough time. And then I think as to when the the tough time is over would probably have to be a conversation between all of us, um restaurant owners, myself and and you guys as board members.
Uh Trustee Lanfear, Jeff, uh procedurally, did I hear you say that that we would not, the trustees would not review this as an application, that rather the the ZBA would?
Well, that's if it's gonna be a temporary use permit application, in which case the trustees are out of it.
Well, that makes, I think that makes sense to me.
And and just, Jeff, if I could ask you a question, you were talking about the
Justin, are you?
Uh Justin, Justin, Justin Lee Strayer has asked to speak. So if you'd like him, go ahead. I can listen.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead, Justin.
Are you there?
Uh yes, I'm here. Um I've been following most of the discussion. And Steve and I already talked about some of these, and I think we we both kind of agreed possibility on these two options. Uh the question is either the use is allowed or the use is not allowed. If the use is not allowed, as Jeff said, I think the temporary zoning permit may be a reasonable pass forward. And that allows one meeting to get it done and one application fee, um which is not very high. Um and if you if you say it's a legal use and then you're modifying the parking lot, well, then that opens us up for site plan review from the planning board um as well as the trustees. And um I think, I mean, you could, I think there's justification for either path. But um having to go before one board, one application fee, I I think is a a fairly simple and clean way of going. And if you say the use is not allowed, then the planning board doesn't need to get involved because they can't review something that's not allowed. Um and so on. At least that's my thinking.
I think also the temporary use permit makes sense because we use it for festivals and for uh weather uh dependent events. And in this case, it's the COVID crisis that it's it's addressing, and i- it seems to suit it well.
Well, I don't, Steve makes this call, obviously, but I don't think it's a permitted use in that location.
And if I could ask that, Jeff, and and I I apologize if I wasn't following. So it's it's a zoning issue specifically in the parking lot, not in our building and not in Aladdin's? It's just the space in between that's not zoned?
I I think, I'm not sure your building is zoned for uh Tavern Overlay District, and I know the parking lot is not. So if it's not a permitted use, that makes the path to the temporary use permit a lot more straightforward.
I mean, it simplifies it, actually.
Yes.
Okay, so if 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 our building, you're, you said you're not sure if our building's zoned?
It is not.
I don't think it is.
It is not. So that was permission.
We looked at the map and and the map doesn't include your building, but you're grandfathered, Casey, so your your use is protected.
Okay, so then by, so by altering our altering our special use permit, we our grandfather clause doesn't continue to additional space. It's only in the confined space that we were grandfathered to before?
I'm not sure what you're asking, but but let me spin it back to you the way I think I heard it. You are permitted to operate in your building the way that you are presently permitted to operate because you are a preexisting nonconforming use. You are not permitted to operate in the adjacent lot either by amending your uh special permit or by a special permit for outside assembly. My judgment then makes it a totally nonpermitted use, which is exactly what a temporary zoning permit is for.
Yeah, so I I was just wondering, uh based on our original approval was my only question. So it I the code has changed, I'm assuming, since we've been approved to come into that space, right? Am I understanding this right?
Code has changed twice since you came into that space.
Right, so yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
All right, um so no action required from us then, Jeff, is that right?
Well, that's what I think, but Steve, do you agree and make that decision?
Steve?
I believe that's the simplest way forward, yes.
Okay. Um.
When when is the planning board meeting next, or would they set up a special meeting for this?
Um if I can speak here, um we're trying, we have to get a notice in the newspaper uh tomorrow. We gotta send it to them tomorrow morning if we're gonna hear it for June fifteenth meeting. Uh it would be very curious to hear Casey's uh timing as to when he needs this so that we know if we, if this falls through for some reason, if we need to schedule a special meeting or if it can wait till our July meeting. Um and and one more thing I'd like to add is I really think and I would strongly recommend the trustees expand the Tavern Overlay District so it includes this property because I think that makes a lot of sense. Um I think this is a reasonable location for
Boy, we're getting some background. Yeah.
So I think this is about the best place in the entire village for a more intensive use that might make a little bit of noise and uh and might be open a little bit later. Uh so I would uh really like it if the trustees would consider expanding that. As then that would give Casey some flexibility to amend his business in in the future, should he wish to do that, instead of having to come in for temporary permits. So that, but that's just my opinion. Um anyway, if Casey can comment on his timing, I would appreciate hearing about that.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. So um the timing is very up in the air. As of right now, if if all goes well, we'll be phase three, which would be June twelfth, um which is is rather aggressive. Um when we we got word, we tried to throw this together as as quick as we could. But um I don't know if that's a realistic goal to to open or not. So I I guess it would be for us to target a date as close to that as possible, you know, without o- overreaching with your board and and being sensitive to everybody's time, obviously. But um I I believe, and Steve can comment here, I believe I've already filled out the application prior to this meeting. So hopefully that's set, but yeah, I I would love to have it open. Obviously, we're, we, we being everybody in that that district are hurting pretty badly right now. So um if if we could open June twelfth, assuming all goes well in the state, that would be fantastic. Um but yeah, a- as close to that as possible would be would be great.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you've filled out every application known to the village right now for this, so.
You're all on, sorry, Casey.
Yeah, and my my take on it is as soon as it could get approved, whether or not you can function, Casey, it behooves the village, based on what's going on right now, to get the uh process and move forward it. So when you're able, you don't have to wait on the village.
I agree with that. Thank you, Steve.
I agree, Steve.
So Justin, Dustin V, I'm hoping that means you could put this on a fast track.
Look forward to seeing it in phase three, Casey.
We're limited by publishing deadlines, which has to get into the newspaper tomorrow. And you guys are well aware of that, that it takes time to get notice and mailings out here. So all the people that are strong supporters of Casey can make sure to attend the meeting and uh voice their opinions uh or people that have other objections uh and so on. So um unfortunately, it takes time, and I don't think it matters which route we take, whether it's a special use permit or going to the CBA, it still needs to get in the newspaper tomorrow, and I believe the earliest we can hear it is June uh fifteenth. So and I agree that Steve needs to make that decision. There's a couple of ways this could possibly go. Um and I'm happy to follow up with Steve in the morning a little bit. And um we tried to get a meeting set up today with Bob and him and myself, and that didn't pan out. But I think we've mostly been in agreement about a couple of options. Steve just has to make the final decision on which ones allowed and which ones not.
Okay, um question, question for you. Um Justin, we had um, we had a breakdown in process the last, it it wasn't this particular application, it was a different one. Um in in terms of getting that notification placed for a PCBA meeting, um how can we help to make sure that that does happen tomorrow? So at the worst case, it's June fifteenth.
Uh I don't know. I'm not in the office. Steve is aware of what's going on. I'm sure, and if Linda's in tomorrow between Steve and Linda and Dorothea, I imagine someone can figure this out. But it's not a hard work. The the only other question that I know is outstanding is um what are the meeting requirements going to be on June fifteenth? Are we doing virtual meetings? Are we returning to Village Hall? And um that's a bit more in Dorothea, but I think the suggestion is we'll just announce both as being an option if uh allowed by uh the New York State, then we'll meet at Village Hall. If not, then we'll meet virtually and check the website. Um so discover your options and someone needs to figure out how to write that up. And as long as that can happen in the morning, um I don't think it needs to be a arduous process.
If I can speak, that actually spoke to Linda, we'll be prepared to put that in the paper tomorrow once we have the determination of what the legal needs to read. Since it's a, it's an already scheduled meeting, there's no trouble trying to get a quorum. That was the holdup with the last posting. It had nothing to do with the office. It was more just trying to get a group together to meet, and that's what held up the last meeting. But we'll be good to go once we have the legal.
Okay, so then do you need something from Jeff?
Uh I'm the working with Jeff anyway on the legal for the proposed local law. It'll, I'm assuming this legal will have to read similar, that again will be Mindy reviewing that legal notice. If, I know she ended up reviewing the previous legal notice, so that was another holdup on that part. So we'll work tomorrow to get that all resolved as quickly as possible, once we have the language.
I'll shoot Mindy uh just a note as a heads up, or Justin, do you want to do that? Just to give her a heads up that this is coming tomorrow, we gotta turn it around pretty quickly to be able to meet a a a public notice deadline.
I I don't know. Do we feel we we have a urgent need to have uh legal review on this? It's not that complicated. I think we can get something done and figured out.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure something happens. I'm just trying to, okay.
I know Mindy jumped in last time on the legal when it was sent to her, and she wanted some language change. And given the complexity of posting this, since we do not know if it's gonna be virtual, we're gonna try to post it both ways. I don't imagine she should have a problem, but I'm assuming she's gonna want some input.
Okay, I can notify, send her an email tonight letting her know to expect this. I was um had an outstanding um request to talk to her today, and that didn't pan out. So she's already aware that I'm looking, uh the village needs a little attention.
Okay. Casey, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted, my my business partner was texting me, he was trying to talk, but he's just on audio, so I just wanted to give him a shot. Seth, if you're on, he had a question.
Seth?
Maybe.
I wonder if, is he calling on a phone? Cause I can unmute.
He was.
Okay, let let me
Yeah, he was. For.
Let me unmute the people who are on the phone and then we'll, it it'll show us which one is
Hey, there we go.
There he is. I thought you were playing a trick on us.
Yeah. No, uh first and foremost, I wanted to to thank everybody for for hearing this proposal tonight. It means a lot to us. Um not only at Lock Thirty Two, but the uh the entire Collins uh family properties. I spoke with them today, so thank you so much. I did just want to add, um you know, I obviously it sounds like we're gonna streamline this as possible, and we'll get it in the uh newspaper. And again, not just even on a business standpoint for us. Obviously, it's it's very important to us to be able to um do more business as the, you know, economic health of our business and and everyone around us. But also for us to be able to get in employees and do the proper training that we need. Um the sooner that we can get going on this, the better for for our end. You know, we want to make sure compliance is is held very high here. So we're gonna make sure that we get a a training policy in place for our employees, everything that the Liquor Authority is recommending. So any of that time that we can get um in order to streamline it just makes it more beneficial and better for us, I think, all the way around. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Seth.
Glad this all worked out because I think it's a good solution. Um I think we can move on. Thank you, Casey. Good luck.
Thank you, guys. So just to be clear, so Steve, I'll I'll hear from you about a a next step once you talk to Justin. Yeah. Okay, great. And and thank you guys very
Thank you, Casey.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Hey, guys, um before we move on to the next thing, I have to duck out um for a family uh situation. So um I will uh talk to you later and um I'll look at the tape on this so I can be up to speed once it's posted. So apologize for this. If I can rejoin, I will, but uh I have to run.
Thank you, Dan. Take care.
Thank you.
Um, next item is the setting of the public hearing for the code change regarding transient merchants. All we really need to do is uh make a motion to uh hold a public hearing on the date that Dorothea will will tell us.
Um may I speak?
Yes, you may.
Um I'm not in agreement with that code. You are repealing the transient merchant code, and we're also rewriting the um the language for temporary permits. And um the link, that's not what the planning board has been requesting, the format of the language in there. So I was hoping we could have a broader uh discussion with the trustees on the policy uh before we get into this. Uh you previously adopted code without even uh without a whole lot of discussion with us, and this is something that we use quite a bit. Um so jumping off and and setting public hearings before we talk to you guys about it, I I think it's the wrong process to go through.
Um, uh Justin, why don't you summarize your concerns so everybody can hear them?
Sorry.
Well, the, we've had a few concerns. So first of all, one of the, what we've been asking for is a clear um guidance on when a temporary permit should be granted and not granted. Right now, it's open ended. You can approve anything, anywhere, anytime, depending on how you interpret code. Um and that's been kind of one of the problems is there, depending on who you talk to, people are having some different interpretations of code possibly, and we shouldn't be having that. Um I think this draft was trying to maybe improve that a little bit, but the ZBA has not been asking to give us authority to grant anything, anywhere, anytime. That doesn't make sense, nor do I think that's anyone's uh intent uh intent. Um one of our, my bigger concerns is residential properties and um temporary permits for commercial uses on residential properties, which does not make a whole lot of sense. So I was I talking to Mayor Corby about this, and if someone wants to run a tattoo parlor out of their house for nine months a year, then get a temporary permit to do that, and that doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Um and and that's an example of something that you can't hear it, see it, or smell it. So it could possibly actually meet the criteria, but we want people living in houses, not operating um overly intensive businesses out of them. Um so I can think of all kinds of examples where that would erode things. So a couple of concerns of mine are um most of these temporary permits are for outdoor activities. Um I don't know if anyone has an example of an of a disallowed use that should be allowed indoors temporarily. Um we have things like, I I, people will do a fundraiser at a church or something like that, but most of those things, I think, can be defined to be just standard accessory uses of uh of an existing building, and we don't need to get into that. Um but
Justin, Justin, I just to interrupt you, I think that's a very good point. Uh we've never issued a temporary use permit, as far as I know, for an interior use. It's only for exterior uses. So that's that, that's a very good point.
So um I mean, you could think of all So, I mean, you could think of all kinds of ways that just that wouldn't make sense. So, for example, via Jerrisol is also a use that the trustees decided that was going to be discontinued. So they grandfathered in. If they wanted to apply for a temporary permit to run their establishment until two in the morning, all summer long, they could do that. And I'm not particularly interested in hearing applications like that. The trustees made a decision that shouldn't be allowed. There is reason for that and we, I don't think we need to really consume our time dealing with that. So that's just another example. Yet another one, you guys have been debating Airbnb's. If you decide to prohibit unhosted Airbnb's, someone could apply for a permit to run an unhosted Airbnb for nine months of the year. Again, that doesn't make any sense. So I think it makes a lot of sense to have temporary permits for events. Exterior type things, that's what they've typically been used for. The other amendment that I've been talking with Steve about and we're both interested in seeing is seeing these smaller ones be just an administrative approval. So we don't need the Pittsburgh Panthers chicken fundraiser to come to the ZBA and charge them a hundred dollar fee for a one-day sale of chicken in the lawn. I think that Steve can manage to deal with that administratively. So we don't need to add a month and a half delay to these applicants. And also so they don't have to pay a hundred dollar fee to have their nonprofit fundraiser. So there's a number of other things I, I think that makes sense to incorporate in this code. And so having a discussion to do this, or maybe I think the most expedient way to get this together would be to maybe have a small, a subcommittee of say a couple of ZBA members and a couple of trustees. We come up with just an outline of maybe what the policy could be and then reconvene and see if anyone objects to it. But I'd be curious the trustees thoughts, if they have any reason that we should allow temporary uses on the interior. Because I think it's pretty easy to focus on the exterior.
I think you're right, Justin. I agree. And I would volunteer to be part of a group to take a look at it. Would anyone else like to do that from the Board of Trustees with me? Lily, thank you.
Yeah.
I had one, one example, the only one I could think of. What did, were there any temporary use permits for the Frog House when they did their events?
Or is that?
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I think one day events, we, we should come up with another way of doing one day things. And those will come up from time to time. The only thing I can think of, and I don't know how this is allowed, but in Saint's Place, when they're doing their sale every year at the church, it's a residential district. And I don't know how that's permitted or if that people just let it go on.
Assume Steve, it's an accessory use of the church. Steve? Uh, you're muted. There we go.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I would feel a one-day sale like that's a, a weekend sales and accessory use. The one thing, Justin, the one thing we're trying to do right now is remove the transient merchant clause because it created, it creates a hole right now, an open-ended hole that anybody could utilize right now to, to do what, exactly what you're saying. They could come in and apply. We really don't have the basis to stop them if they meet the criteria of a transient merchant use. So that was one of the, the, the points of having Jeff rewrite or remove that portion of the code so that it doesn't bite us in the leg, so to speak.
I have no objection to you guys repealing just that section of code. And if we can have a little subcommittee together to just spend a week and writing up some, maybe some bullet items of what we think makes sense for policy for the temporary permits code and then get something drafted. I don't think it needs to take a lot of time to get this drafted. But I just think it needs a little back and forth with both the commit, the trustees and the ZBA. So it doesn't sound like we have a whole lot of disagreement on what policy should be, which is good.
Yep. The only thing I would, I would kind of not agree with is making it a, a temporary use strictly external. Because we don't know what's going to come forward and I would not want to see anybody denied from a temporary use for whatever, based that we turned it into an exterior type function versus an all-around function.
I'm trying to think of a interior, an interior situation where we would allow a temporary use.
Don't know. We're, we're, we're in some very interesting times, Bob. So I don't know that, you know, people, people may come up with an inventive way to, to survive right now. And I would not want us to do anything that would hamper a unique idea that would offer somebody a way to make a living or, or you know, to feed their family.
Well, retail's going to change and that's something we're going to have to be alert to. What comes out of this? Because we're probably going to see a different mix of uses when it's all the dust settles. Okay, so.
There's a prior time when I think the trustee has granted a non-municipal use permit for, for someone playing a guitar indoors in a business. So that was one way that the trustees decided to deal with that. So the only other thing I would say is I would like on residential properties that are actually homes, not residential properties that are churches, I think it makes a lot of sense to scale these back on what you can get. So we don't need to have a, you know, a large fundraiser, chicken sale and Bob's front lawn, for example. Not that your front lawn.
Chicken sale because my front lawn's not very big. Okay, so I, I think we have a path forward. So do you think it's premature, obviously to hold a public hearing? We're going to get a new draft. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes, in agreement. Yeah. And done in a collaborative manner between the two boards.
Justin, we'll have, who wants to coordinate the meeting?
Well, I guess we need to find out who's going to be involved. So I heard Mayor and Lily want to be involved. I would like to be involved and I haven't talked to the rest of my board yet and Steve would like to be involved. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think between everybody, we can come up with some decent ideas and bring it back to the larger group. So if we're having a meeting on June 15th, that would be a good time for the entire ZBA to talk about this matter. And I think we could at least come up with some bullet items or a template of something or other that, before that time, so that it could be circulated around.
Good. My, I'll come to that meeting so we can hear your discussion.
So, so I'll find out another volunteer from our board and I'll follow up with you, Mayor, and we'll set up a time to discuss.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you for tuning in tonight. Okay, the next item we have is a proposal to consider a temporary one-way traffic pattern on Shane Place. And I'll let Renee, who's been researching this, let her have the floor.
Alright, so a lot of residents who use that area approached me about possibly giving more space to pedestrians and cyclists, which a lot of cities are doing right now and a lot of towns are doing to allow for social distancing. So I first talked to the emergency responders to see if it was even worth pursuing. And they were open to the idea, just again, on a temporary basis, to try it out in a very agile, experimental way to see what would and wouldn't work by putting out some cones. And you know, those they could move if they needed to get down there, they could move them pretty quickly if a fire truck or an emergency vehicle needed to get down there. And we met the day before the woman drove her car into the canal and Ryan had said, well, there's, there, we, we don't have a lot of calls down there. And then that one happened. But anyway, that was a unique situation, hopefully. But the next step is to talk to all the businesses. So I, I did go down there to, to map out what might work best. So I gave you all a drawing. I didn't want to put that out there as, for anyone to misconstrue as something official that we're putting, putting out there. Because this is just an idea that we're exploring and like maybe trying it out on a Sunday. I have talked to some of the businesses and it's most of them that I've spoken with thus far do not like this idea at all. They're very concerned that anything that might deter drivers from parking or might confuse them will make them turn around and not frequent their businesses. So they are very concerned. And, and I, I understand and I want to hear that. I don't know that I would be comfortable doing this even on a temporary basis. If we find out that a lot of the businesses really, really don't like this idea and are really afraid it's going to impact their business. So Dorothea sent along, I don't know, Dorothea, can you screen share it so I can?
Sure.
What's that? It is. I didn't know if, for, I don't know how many people are calling in if we need to put it up on the screen. Normally during normal times, I would pass it out and have a, have a couple of printouts, but the idea would be to have the northbound lane be designated for car traffic, vehicle traffic, and it would go one way. The lane would start right after the entrance to Northfield Common on Shane Place. So we'd probably need to put like a metal barricade right there, just on the, the very ends where that red, that red mark is. And then the, the middle part would just be cones because we could be very agile with that. But traffic would flow from east to west. And if you scroll down, Dorothea, so that's the beginning of where it would start. And here's where it would end going. It would allow people to still enter and exit Northfield Common for norm, as normal and enter and exit the parking lot in front of the wine shop and tow path bike as normal. And.
Renee, I thought of one little glitch in the plan.
Tell me.
The parking that's in front of the Degenharts little office building, the, the real estate office in Aladdin.
Yeah, we have to.
Cross the lane.
Yes, we'd have to have some, we, that's the one little area. For the most part, it's a straight shot because if we use the, the north lane for traffic, most of the big parking lots are on that area. But you are right, we'd have to sort of see what would and wouldn't work for those parking lots that are, sorry, I've got a little frog in my throat. For the parking lots that are in front of red, is that Red Barn? I'm going to say it wrong, red. The, those ones right next to Aladdin's. And that could, you know, those are some trouble spots, so.
There's another trouble spot also, Renee, and I, I'm not, just so we can try to study these and figure out what the solution is. But in the Coal Tower parking lot, when you back out of a 20-foot parking space, you generally are allotted a 24-foot clear to make a 90-degree bend so you can then pull forward. So if we're taking half of the street, we'll have to look and see, is there enough clearance that those parking spaces they could back out into without knocking the cones over or worse, bicyclist or pedestrian? So those are two areas we're going to ask to study.
Okay, and the, the emergency services would want that traffic lane to be 12 feet and it's only 22 feet wide. So we're not talking about a lot of space. And this would require, you know, Zach's team to get out. So it would, we, it would be resources. We'd need cones. We'd need Zach's team to put them out. And the, the initial idea that we talked about was just trying it out on a Sunday. But I haven't heard from enough businesses that they do even like it for a Sunday. They're worried about it confusing people. And again, deterring people who are driving from coming down there. All the research that we have indicates that the friendlier you make it for, for bikes and pedestrians, you know, the, the, the more that will help businesses. However, I, I, this is such a weird, terrible time for businesses. I want to hear them out and I don't know that I feel comfortable moving forward if enough of them don't like this idea. So I'm providing an update. Yeah, I'm providing an update and hopefully you all can chime in to whether we even want to, because I've spent, I've spent quite a bit of time on this between meeting with the emergency responders and, and reaching out to all the businesses. And if it's, if we think it's just not worth pursuing, this is the wrong time. I, I would like to hear that.
I think one option that we might want to consider, Renee, would be shortening the one-way section of the street, maybe starting it at the sand patch ticket booth. Because then you'd eliminate the conflicts with the parking. And people could get to the, all the businesses on the east end and turn around in the Coal Tower parking lot. And it would be quite as restrictive. So you might, as you talk to business people, you might throw that out as an option.
Okay, that's, that's, that's good. A lot of them liked down, you know, liked the idea of eventually shutting it down entirely to pedestrian traffic, assuming we could have a way for, for traffic to get, to get by. But we're, so it's not that they're against necessarily making more room for pedestrians and cyclists. They are really worried about deterring people from coming to their businesses who are driving.
Right, right.
And, and one of them is against it entirely because just he, he, even on a temporary basis, he thinks there's plenty of room and that we don't have any issues there right now. So that's, that's the update on that project. So I like your input, Bob. I will, so is it worth continuing to talk to the businesses? What do you all think?
Zachary had something that he wanted to say, Renee.
Sure. Oh, sorry, I can't see everybody. Let me.
Zachary went, he's raising his hand.
We see half of Zach's head.
Yeah. You can take the, the drawing.
Kind of big.
Okay, sorry.
Well, I did a little research. The length of the road is 1,795 feet. If we were to put cones every six to eight feet, we're talking about 300 to 350 cones. I was a little off on my current, my first estimate of the, the cost of a cone. They're $13.50 apiece and that's without stenciling. So, yeah, we're talking close to $4,000, $4,500 in cone. And that's, that's if we go end to end. The other thing is too, is all the entrances and exits from the, the parking, the parking lots are going to need one-way signs set up.
Right. Separate one-way signs, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, depending on how long that one-way stretch is going to be, that could pose a problem also. If, if the one-way stopped at the, the parking lot in front of the wine store, then that might also be a problem with traffic turning around in there too, if they don't have a heads up that it is going to be a dead end for them unless they turn onto the Shane Place.
Yeah, the wine store and tow path, neither of them are open on Sunday, which is when we're proposing it right now. So that's less of a concern. But obviously if it was another, if it was on Saturday, we would, we would, that, that would probably be a concern because people are getting their bikes and that's where they're doing their business right now and picking up their wine. So. Yeah, 45, and we have no way to buy, so there's no way to even test this out without buying the cones first. We, we can't borrow from the town or.
Yeah, there's a lot of cones to borrow from the town. We have, we have probably about 75 cones on hand, but right now.
We need 1,700, is that what you said?
Zach, I have a question for you. When, in paddle and pour, when they made it one-way, what did they do?
That, I don't know. You'd have to ask Kelly Klein because I'm pretty sure she's the one who drew up the the plan for turning that into a one-way road. I'm not sure.
We, we might take a look at that also, Renee. We can call Kelly and, and figure out what, what had been done previously.
Was it, Bob, was that one-way? That was, that was just one, that was just one-way into Northfield Common and then out. And then, and then it was blocked off at the other end, but it was all pedestrian in between. There were no, there was no traffic at all.
Yeah, I don't.
That's right. That's right. Totally blocked out. Yeah, you're correct. Steve has his hand up. Steve, you have the floor?
Yeah, I, I, you know, Renee presented this and I, and I thought about it for a bit and I, I actually talked to Doug, the fire chief. Doug was uncomfortable with this. I personally am, you know, no offense Renee, but I'm. Doug was uncomfortable with this. Um, I personally am, you know, no offense Renee, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this. I'm uncomfortable with closing a lane down or using cones to block a car from a pedestrian or, or from a bicycle. I think it's a liability nightmare to me. I mean, if we close that road off and something happens, who's responsible? A cone will not stop a, a car and if somebody clips a cone driving along there and throws it into somebody walking around a bicycle, it, it could create a huge problem. Um, that, that's my take on it. I, I think it's a logistical nightmare and it's a safety issue for the pedestrian bicyclists. I, I mean, I'm all for inventive ideas because I believe in trying to help people out, but I don't wanna see us in a situation to create something a little more uncomfortable than we're already in, you know, an uncomfortable time. But that's my, my opinion.
Yeah, no, I don't take any offense. No, you don't have to like all my ideas, it's okay. I'm trying to explore, yeah, and if there, I wish there was a way we could shut it off entirely just for, you know, a, a Sunday, but it doesn't sound like the, the, like we do for Paddle and Pour and it doesn't sound like we have enough support yet for, for something like that either. And we don't wanna hurt the businesses, so we're trying to, you know, respond to what our residents are asking for and explore some ideas. So I'm open to anything and everything.
Well, I think, I think you're, you know, I think the concept is great. I think, you know, any concept like this, you troubleshoot it and then you find all the problems and that's how you get, you solve them. So uh, you put a lot of work into it. I think we're not done yet. Um, but obviously there, there are a few issues. I think the biggest thing is, does the merchants like it or do the merchants not like it?
Yeah, and I'm not comfortable, um, I'm not comfortable doing something at this time when they're already hurting so bad. Um, experimenting and um, unless most of them are, are on board. I'd say, you know, I, I'd need ninety percent of them to think it was a good idea, so.
Right.
I don't know if my sample size is, is indicative of the bigger lot.
Yeah, thinking of that, Renee, is, uh, that was my first thought, is the merchants and, and, and everything is in transition right now in uncertain times and to change anything at this point in time would, would just add to the discomfort because some, I think we're gonna be still operating with the curbside and just change the traffic patterns or trying to change them now when they're also trying to negotiate, you know, navigate with the curbside pickup, it's, it's gonna be very challenging. So I think, you know, that, that was, that was foremost in, in my mind when I started thinking about how this might work out.
Yeah, me too, when I started hearing from them. So thank you so much for, for your thoughts.
You can always insure over the liability, but that doesn't change the risk at all. You're, you're still might be putting people in harm's way.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we did what we, go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that I've been um, trading messages with um, oh, now I forgot his name, a DOT. Um, and also uh, I was thinking that uh, we might wanna talk to Howard Mufuuchi because the road patrol underfunds speed enforcement and it's such uh, on Monroe Avenue, on Jefferson Road, it's such a life safety issue that I thought we should meet with our, our county legislature representative and see if we could get more funding for speed enforcement. Um, we're not the only one that has this problem, but it's, it really is a terrible problem. And then I saw on Facebook that Howard Mufuuchi is in the hospital, so uh, do you know what, is he gonna be, is that something?
I think it's, I think it's uh, his arm, something with his arm or his hand. Um, uh, it sounds like he's gonna be okay.
Uh, the other thing, uh, Frank and Zach, I have a conflict tomorrow morning and was wondering if we could move our meeting to Thursday.
I'm fine with that.
Would that work for you, Frank?
Bob, I will con, I will confirm with you after the meeting. I'm gonna have to check, I, I have to check. I don't have my calendar with me.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
But uh, Bob, going back to your comment about uh, traffic and speed and State Street, um, we have something like five hundred and thirty-nine villages in the state. And I'm sure that probably ninety-five percent of the villages have the same problem we do. We all, we all face the problem. It's a statewide problem with all the villages. And I think we should pursue it, not with the locals, well, we ought to pursue it with the local sheriff's department, but we ought to be talking to our assembly person, to our state senator. Now, I know that, that when someone went to Mr. Funky, he wasn't interested in. But if it was a statewide issue, if a group of our residents formed a committee and started calling on our assembly people and our senator and came up with a plan for the, for the state, for the state villages, it would have a lot more power than us going to the sheriff's department and asking them to post a car there two or three times a week. So I suggest that those village residents, perhaps John Limbeck, uh, one of those people and maybe a member of our board, uh, if we formed a committee and really went after it, went after it actively, first starting with our state uh, uh, assembly person and uh, and carrying forward with that, I think we'd have a lot more, a, a, a lot more weight behind us than we do now.
Thank you, Frank. Okay. Um, uh, Dorothea, wanted to give an update on uh, protocol in the office?
Um, real quick, there was a couple of questions from Dave Marshall. He put out some comments. Um, one, he said, and it's related to the temporary use permits. He was saying tour of homes similar to the historical society, maybe that's a thing that would be internal. Music lessons, he's not sure about that, but the question is, and this goes to Jeff. I know there was a concern with that transient merchant code. Do we need still to repeal that current code? And should the board be able, can the board act on that part of the local law?
The board can act on that part of the local law, but I thought that the board tied them together in some way the last time we met.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't.
If we repeal the current code, then we won't have any code, would it, like?
No, the transient merchant, just that transient merchant section.
That's what he's talking about, but what if something comes through if we, because we don't have something to replace it yet, right?
No, I think the, my understanding, I don't wanna say no, but my understanding was that we were trying to clean up the temporary use permit code, so the ZBA was comfortable using it so that we were gonna get, then we were gonna get rid of the um, transient merchant. But it sounds to me like if they're gonna use the temporary use permit code for lock thirty-two, then generally speaking, we can get rid of the transient merchant. Transient merchant is just a bad thing to have in our code. Just bad.
So can we go forward with the public hearing on just that section, Jeff?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
All right, so I'll make a motion to uh, hold a public hearing to consider.
Bob, you gotta get, turn towards the computer, Bob.
Yeah, sorry, I was reading it off the agenda. I keep doing that, sorry, I apologize. Um, I, I propose a motion to, to set a public hearing uh, for the code change adri- uh, item, addressing transient merchants at the date that Dorothea tells us it has to be.
Now I'm gonna ask Jeff a real quick question. Jeff, do we still wanna try to enact that by the fifteenth or can that wait to our July meeting?
I would say the sooner we can get off our books, the better, but you're, you know, I mean, that's my theory, but I'm, that's a policy decision for the trustees.
Then this is a question to the trustees. Do you want a special meeting or do you wanna go ahead and just wait for your July fourteenth meeting?
I'd be okay with uh, either way, either way. I don't think we're gonna have a lot of applications right now, but I agree with Jeff, the sooner we get rid of it, the better.
You might have, actually, now is the time you might have applications.
Yeah, that's true. That's a good point, that's a good point.
That's right.
Okay.
The earliest the board can hear this is July, is June fifteenth, but we are tying that together with the PZDA. I hate to kinda have two kinda strange meetings held posting-wise that night.
Yes, I agree.
We do it the sixteenth, if they're the fifteenth, which is a Monday.
That's what I was gonna say, the sixteenth. Board, if they're okay to go ahead with the sixteenth, then you can set your time appropriately if you wanna do another six o'clock or seven o'clock. I, I'm not sure how the board feels.
June sixteenth at six o'clock?
If that's good. Okay, then I would say sixteen.
Okay, uh, Dorothea, did you wanna talk about office protocol?
Um, we didn't finish that motion. I think we have a motion for me.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Six o'clock, Dorothea?
Six o'clock, Dorothea?
Yep.
We need a second on the motion.
June fifteenth.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, yes.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, y- yes.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Okay.
And Leslie's here from Sam Patch too.
Oh.
Hi, Leslie.
Uh, she.
Captain, Captain Leslie.
Captain Leslie, sorry.
Oh, she's muted, hold on. Okay, she's unmuted. Leslie, um, we went ahead and approved your non-municipal. I didn't know if you wanted to speak to the board.
Maybe she's not there right now.
Okay.
Okay, all right, Dorothea, uh, office protocol.
Okay, the office protocol and with the status is what we're looking at. Um, speaking to Bob, we're looking at opening the office complete, round July first. We have the, current taxes are going out June first. My concern with having completely open at that time, that's encouraging more traffic into the office that paid the tax bill. And that would require the office to do more extensive cleaning between upstairs and the bathrooms and everything. So we'd like to avoid that much public interaction and have them use the Dropbox and we'll encourage that on our website as well. We send receipts out to residents anyway, so we will continue that process. Um, the one cut hustle to that is as of June first, we'll let Steve start setting appointments with people for building permit application issues. So that's our next step. DPW, I believe, as uh, what is it, June ninth or Ju- June seventh, you go to summer hours, Zach?
No, we're on summer hours now.
No, June first.
Or, no, I'm sorry, June first.
Okay, yep, June first. And I think that's pretty much where we're at. Did you have anything to add to that, Bob?
No, I don't think so. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I, I speak to Leslie first. She, she, she came to let her know about her.
Oh, there she is. Hi, Leslie.
Yes, yes.
Oh, you're muted. No, you're not. We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
But we approved it.
You're good.
You're all approved.
Um, before, uh, before we adjourn, I have one question for Zach. About um, the State Street neighbors say um, the cones are working great at slowing people down coming into the village, but going out as soon as they go over the bridge. Um, and they, they know they're heading for that forty-five mile per hour uh, zone, they speed up. So I don't know if we could move them on the one side. I haven't been out there lately to, to see um, how they're set up.
I can put cones up by the bridge on the eastbound lane. Um, I did get a call today, uh, someone uh, anonymous uh, showing concern for the uh, shoulder being closed off with the cones and cycling through there, so. Um.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know how far we wanna push it, but I can put them out there.
Um, no, that's okay. I mean, that's what we said we would do. We would try to experiment with, with slowing it down. So um, yeah, I don't know what, what can be done, but I, I told them I would bring that back um, tonight to see, and they, they did, one of the signs is out, one of the radar signs, is that ours or is that the sheriff's?
Nope, that's ours.
Okay, and it wasn't showing speed, but maybe that's because it just went out or um, maybe people were driving too slow.
Long weekend, so the battery was probably dead at that point.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's what I figured, okay.
Had a battery in it today, so I'll, I'll check it out again uh, Thursday.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, so it's possible the cones may be short-lived if, well, we'll see. Okay, well, thank you. That's all, they said it's been working and they're stepped up patrols, um, so they are seeing a, a, a change in driver behavior, so.
Good deal.
As far, so thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Galusha.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, yes.
Trustee Galusha?
Yes, Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Have a wonderful evening. Motion passes.
Thank you, Dorothea.
Night.